Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the November 4th meeting of the Abington Planning Board to order, call to order. And I guess the first thing we have on the agenda is the minutes of the October 7th meeting. I wish I wasn't here, as everyone had a chance to review them.
Motion to approve?
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would say abstaining.
And both of you are abstaining?
Yeah, both of you, Jeff and I are abstaining.
Oh, then.
So we can't?
You can't. You got to, we got to continue until the next meeting.
Okay, we'll continue it to the next meeting. Okay, all right, we'll do that. All right, Liz, do we have any correspondence?
I think very quickly I included a couple of things in your pack. At least, I hope I did. There is a meeting on November 18th about the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Everybody's invited. It's 7 o'clock in this room. And we also have a survey out about water. I'm sitting on a regional water steering committee, and we're nearing the end of that. So this is your thoughts on the water supply, safe water, clean water. If you guys could hop on and take that.
How does that one differ from this other water study I saw that was completed in, was it 2022? There's another MWR study that was done.
This has nothing to do with MWR. It's the OCPC towns. They received a grant, OCPC did, so they've hired CDM Smith. So it's all really southeast regional towns, the water supply, which makes it interesting for me because Rockland is not in OCPC. So we're in a joint waterworks, but the town is in OCPC and...
So it's one of those things where it's like, have Brockton use their water plant, everybody else uses Silver Lake and...
It's, it's actually a much deeper dive. It's the Jones River, it's cranberry growers, like, everybody has a seat at this table for their water needs, for clean water. A lot of towns around well water. You know, do they have to test for PFAS? Not, that's not our issue, but that's other towns' issues. The cost of that is a homeowner. All of this stuff is sort of being thrown into the mix, and then they're sorting it out, and they'll do a report. I hope we have that in March. There'll be a public unveiling, I think, in March, anyway.
So this is kind of like a goal?
It's going to give us short and long-term goals. You know, so very specifically for Abington, we've met with them. Tom Manner and I have met with them a couple of times, and it's, you know, our interest in getting water from the MWR. But if we can't get that down here fast enough, then if Brockton buys the D cell plant, could we tap into that for additional water? I think we've been clear with them. Whoever's, whoever has the, we'd like to be first dibs on whichever side. So, but it's fascinating, because we're down to Pembroke Plymouth and then back up to Avon. So it's a very interesting conversation to have.
Thanks for, you know, being part of that, Liz, and thanks for, you know, keeping us informed of that. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And this November 18th meeting sounds really good.
Yep, yep, we're well underway. We've done assessments on most of the recreation areas, parks, playgrounds, stuff like that in town, and there's been a survey sent out before, and so we're going to kind of gather together and get everybody's feedback on that.
Yeah, I was at, I was at a meeting at OCPC today to dedicate the main conference room in honor of the late Daniel Crane, who was executive director there for 32 years. But anyway, I was talking to one of the planners there, Laurie Muncie, and she said that she's working Housing Production Plan and some other things, and...
Yep.
So that's my old employer, so I'm glad that you're working with Laurie. She's great.
Yeah, we're going to look forward to that. We just got that grant funding to update our housing production plan, and we're going to use that money in addition to our DLTA money that we can apply for every year, and that together will get our housing production plan updated next year.
And since I'm a newly appointed member of the Abington Housing Trust...
I know, right? Congratulations!
I want to know about that. Okay, we have the ZBA agenda. But do you have any questions, comments on that?
Hold on one second, let me check myself. No.
Any other comments at all?
Yep.
Oh, can we go back to correspondence for a minute? And you had in your packet the CTP Citizens Planner Training Collaborative 24, 2024 webinar series, all winter workshops, and a whole bunch of things. They're trying to rope me into, you know, doing one of these things. But I'm on the board of CTPC, and these look good. If you guys see anything that interests you, please let Liz know and stuff like that.
Because we'll pay for them.
We'll pay for them.
And I think there's a credit card available now, so I don't have to wait and get a check and do all of that. So some of them are back-to-back, which I know can be tough, but I'm hoping they'll do some of those in the spring. But yeah, anybody who hasn't, they're all at night, I think, via Zoom. So if anybody wants to go, just let me know, and we'll get you signed up and registered.
Yeah, we hope to use this association. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll be interested in at least one of them.
Okay, that'll be great, thanks.
Shoot me an email, give us a call, we'll get you set up.
Yeah. Let me know which one you want to do, because I might go it too. I know we're having a board meeting on Wednesday. I'm on the board of CTPC. We're having a board meeting on Wednesday, so I'm sure we'll talk about that. CDPC gets incredible enrollments in these webinars, a lot more enrollments than we used to have them in person. You know, sometimes they get 50, 60, 70 people sign up.
It's easier to go via Zoom.
It's easier to do via Zoom. That's exactly right. Okay, Form A applications.
Before you, I've already put them out, is 267-279 North Quincy Street. If this looks familiar, it's because you've already done it. Within a year or two, I'm not quite sure when was the last time we did it, but anyway, Needle Brothers came in, Brian Needle, and he asked at that time that the board split this parcel and Lot A, he has his landscaping company on, and the board approved that. The problem was the engineer who drew the plan did not include the line between Abington and Brockton on the plan. And that's the one place in the world where the line does not go straight down the street. It's skewed, and it actually veers off of North Quincy Street and actually crosses over the front pieces of some of those properties that you would think are all in Abington, and they're not. So Mr. Needle brought this back in, so it will be a correct version on file at the Registry of Deeds, showing the frontage in Brockton. As you can see, they've already been to the Brockton Planning Board, had them sign off on it.
Just, okay, so if I remember correctly, Lot A is kind of where he has his landscaping business, correct?
Correct.
Lot B is part of all that other mess that's up there?
Correct.
And who owns Zero North Quincy Street? Is that still the people? Because that was all part of it, right?
Insolpro, I thought, what that gentleman, I thought he had owned that. I forget his name, I haven't talked to him in a while, yes.
I believe so.
Okay.
I believe so. I'm not 100% sure, but I am pretty sure it's them. Yes, Pro Realty Trust, if you look on the right-hand side. Pro Realty Trust is that other, the Semino's, I believe.
Yeah.
So they still own half of that land up there?
Yes, 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 they're still the owner of Rockland.
Brian Needle just bought kind of that other half of it?
He bought the area that he had, was using for his landscape company, and then made an agreement with Pro Realty Trust to carve that piece off for his landscaping business, and the rest of it remained.
Right.
And the other person's ownership.
So it says that the project site's not located within the area mapped as priority habitat, yada, yada, yada. Have we double-checked that? Because we were also told there's no wetlands up there, and there clearly are. So like, have we double-checked to make sure that...
We have not.
Okay. Just because it's right next to Ames Knoll?
Yep.
On two sides. I'm happy to sign off on this now with the caveat that, you know, we'll check and make sure it's not actually on any of those maps, and there's nothing else needs to be recorded, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess I'll make that motion, motion to approve with the condition that you or Kevin will check to make sure it's not on any maps we need to be aware of.
So you just want to make sure that that...
Yeah. That's without, outside any flood zones, just to double-check.
Those three statements.
Yeah, just to double-check.
Yep.
Yeah.
Before we...
Zoomed in as close to the property, it's kind of after, yeah.
That's power lines.
Is it?
Of course. Well, does anyone else have any comments before we...
Do we want to wait for approval until the check is done? Or, I mean, is there, is there any harm to the applicant to wait a month?
I'm assuming that it's fine. It's just that 1% chance in case it isn't, come back. But I wouldn't want to necessarily hold it up, because it's probably okay. We've already proved it once, but...
I agree, it's just that, whatever comes up to Zero is a closer look, because it's gotten...
Would it be sufficient if I checked in with the chairman of the Conservation Commission and had her look...
That would be appropriate.
On mass map or whatever she uses to confirm, like, if they call and say, can you check for wetlands?
Yeah.
All right, so you guys would be good if I, so if you want to sign them, and I'll double-check with her. It may not be tomorrow, because I'm not in the office. But I'll double-check before I give the plans.
Yep.
Back to him? Okay. All right.
So...
Did you vote?
We haven't voted yet.
No, I had a motion and a second.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good. So we'll wait till the other meeting to sign these things?
No, if you want to sign them now, I will give them to them. Can you undo it from there, so I can sign this one too?
You can throw it over in the table and sign it after.
Put it on the table and sign it after.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just gonna...
Liz, you want to take this one too, please? Let's see, come on. You know, we've already discussed the CBPC upcoming planning opportunities.
Correct.
You want to give us an update?
Really, I don't have much. I'm not sure if you guys, I told you that we got the grant to update the housing production plan. We also got the downtown initiative grant, $25,000. I'm not sure if I knew that at our last meeting. So we're working with a consultant to do some improvements in North Abington Center.
What would those improvements be? I'm just curious.
We're looking, depending on the money, the facade improvement program, so that the businesses would have an opportunity, we would kind of do a match money-wise. Wayfinding, signage, new street lamps that have flowers on them and that don't, they work by electricity, not by solar, because I guess those don't last as long. Those are some of the general ideas we've sort of discussed. That will depend on what we end up with for usable cash at the end of the day.
But in the end, it still depends on the property owners down there to make investments in their own property to...
Correct, correct.
Make it nicer.
Yep.
I was surprised by Venus, whoever took that over.
Yeah, they did a lot of work. Yeah. Downtown Initiative, we got money, John Stone, and we had a consultant, so we all worked together. And we got money for sidewalk design on Summer Street.
Oh.
From Walnut Street down to Progress Street, which was great. And we are working on the Catalyst Grant as we speak.
That'd be great.
To do center of paving. It has to be in the area, and I needed, I mean, John Stone needs to tell me what he wanted done, and he said that's on his list of stuff to do. So we'll do ADA transitions, paving, and kind of improve that area down there, prove the road, anyway.
So which grant pool would help finish the sidewalk on Summer?
So we should probably be able to apply through the One Stop Portal next year, if we have the design work all done.
Okay.
And we can go through the One Stop, which is where we got three of our grants this year out of that. Because that's Mass Works, it's everything. Well, they're trying to wrangle all the grant in there.
Yeah.
And we're also talking about applying for an MVP grant. We did that, right?
What does that mean, please?
Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. Right now, we're in the second year of our pilot program with them, which was to do a deep dive on community engagement, hearing back from the community about what they feel our climate resilience problems are. It's a lot of climate resiliency and community engagement, and we are getting near the point where we get $50,000 for a seed project. So we're getting towards that part, to kind of pick a seed project, go back to the community, communities we visited before, which were lower-income seniors, non-English speakers, and say, you know, does, does our choice reflect what you would like to see? Some of those things were community gardens in different parks, not just at Griffin's. So people with access to fresh food, help with English-speaking, fresh food was a big one, and electricity, being able to, because in some of the places where some of the lower-income people live, if they lose power, they only have, the generators only support the electricity in the hallways. So if they're on oxygen and stuff like that that require electricity, they're going to sit out in the hallway with that.
That's right, because it's all batteries, mostly.
Right. So, I mean, we don't necessarily have enough money to fix those kind of problems, but we can maybe make a start, so. And then we can go on from there. But this project we're looking at, we would do in tandem with Rockland, and it would be to identify flood-prone areas and maybe assess those, identify those, and then we could further move into like a culvert, enlarging culverts, because if areas are pinched and we need larger culverts, this problem, this project would identify that. So we're in the process of starting to apply for that.
Good.
It's busy, 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 busy.
When the water flows here, it flows.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, John Stone has actually, I identified multiple culvert issues. One of them, kind of funny, not kind of funny, is because there's a beaver that keeps building dams. And the culvert is too small.
Seems appropriate for this town.
Right? So, and you can't remove the beavers. So, anyway, that, we could build a bigger culvert and alleviate the problem. So that's sort of, that's an aberration to what normally these problems would be, but that's...
It'd be a shame if something happened to that beaver, right?
Right?
Would you come out with a hat?
Didn't one of them was in a, I want to call it animal foster care, and they were trying to put it back out in the wild? Hitty?
Yeah, Bill Rickert or something.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I was like, oh no, can't, can't stop the beaver conversation, Abington relocating. So that, that was about it. We've been at it, trying to onboard all these grants and get them up and running and contract them, and, but, yeah.
Congratulations on getting these grants to the town. It's really good, appreciate it.
Definitely a team effort.
Mr. Chairman, two requests for future agendas.
Yes, sir.
One, I would be interested to have the building commissioner come in and give us updates on, for instance, 267 North Quincy, where everything stands with that, with New England Art, with a couple other projects he's been working on. I think it would be helpful to have an update.
Yeah, that came up at CPA meeting last week, you know, well, it was your wife, but...
It's only come about the arts building?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I...
People in town, they just see it, looks like hell, and they want to do something.
I want the town to buy it, but that's, that's me, because you could probably get it for cheap sun right now, because of the summer and down. Anyway...
I think, I think we all want to see something now.
Yeah.
Not rather than have it torn down.
So you want us to send him an email and ask his availability?
Yeah, if, if our agenda is busy for December, that's fine. If it's January, that's fine. It's no immediate rush, but I'd welcome a chance to have him stop by and give an update. The second one is, we're getting into budget season. We're going to start hearing about how the town has a big budget problem. We're going to start hearing, I think at the next meeting, they're talking about the commercial tax rates again.
Talking about that deal, and I...
Yeah.
Tax classification, they did it the last meeting.
They did.
Yep.
We haven't had much progress in figuring out a strategy to grow our commercial tax base. It really doesn't fall within our jurisdiction, because we don't have any power to do anything for the most part as the board, and it's never appeared on the Board of Selectman agenda for the past couple of years. So I don't know, they just don't know what to do with it, or what? What I would like to maybe do is to come up with four or five strategies that we can give the Board of Selectmen and say, here, these are things you might want to consider doing to build it out. So maybe discussion at an upcoming meeting about what those things could be. I don't know if Liz and Kevin have any time to put together a list of ideas of things that we could recommend, whether it's direct conversations with property owners, getting properties listed on commercial real estate sites, whatever those tools, levers, whistles, bells, whatever might be, that we can then package up and say to the Selectmen, this is something that you could do or direct people to do. We can't even direct your day-to-day stuff, so I would just, and the Selector can ignore it, not do anything, but at least we can say we tried to give you something. So I don't know.
Well, I mean, a chunk of that has to do with zoning, right?
Yeah. Well, some of it's zoning.
Some of it's zoning.
Some of it is just a bunch of property owners who frankly haven't, don't have the need to invest in their property right now, or...
Right.
Will, interest, time, whatever it is.
I don't know what you would want to happen with that, right?
So part of that is, what do other towns do when they have large areas of property and the owners have zero interest in investing?
I mean, I'll be perfectly honest with you. There was a grant available to convert, underutilized properties, to convert large blah-blah property. So Arnold Chu, across from Arnold Park, great, right? You can turn it into residential, that would help the center, all of that. So we start down the investigative path, and we get the owner, we email him a letter or send him an email. No interest, he likes what he's doing with his building.
Which is fine.
Yep.
But I want to make sure that we're doing that on a larger scale up and down our most valuable commercial corridor, and not just saying, oh, well, nothing we can do.
Well, I mean, there's not much left up there, right? The pool place and the Christmas place was the last really large parcel, and that's...
That's been sold.
Been sold, and...
Yeah, but, but all that land is not being used to its maximum potential. That's my concern. Like, the Geo Oso property is, I know there's some wetlands up there, but that's, who acres is up there? All those things next to each other, that's, I mean, storing mulch is not a great commercial enterprise for the town's perspective. We keep seeing medical buildings going up in Wamouth and East Bridgewater, but not in Abington. So like, what can we do to...
They end up down here at the end of the day, anyway.
Well, they're better class of vulnerable.
Right, right?
And, and if it is, all right, let's change zoning, let's at least do that piece.
So, and we do need to do an overhaul of that, that is on the radar right now. We're going to have to tackle ADUs. And as I mentioned earlier, we went to that webinar and came out more confused than we went in. There was a, there were, the promise of this webinar was they were going to take questions.
Liz, could you explain to people watching this?
Accessory dwelling units, the state, under the Affordable Home, and I almost said Kia, Affordable Homes Act, made permitting an accessory dwelling unit on your property allowable by right, effective February 2nd of 2025. It's not, it's not allowable yet, but it will be. And rest assured, we were not the only committee, only community concerned about the timing of all of this. Most communities have their town meetings in the spring. And EOLHC, which I can't even get into the, the Elba Bed Soup, it's the Executive Office of Housing Living, Livable Communities, the old DHCD, is going to promulgate regulations. That wasn't even known before today. So I guess my problem with the whole way this got dropped is it gets dropped in August, that's when they passed the law, and we're having a special town meeting November 26th, so maybe we could have addressed, written a quick bylaw or amended our bylaw and been in a position that on February 2nd, we have a bylaw in place that addresses, you know, setbacks and building width and bulk and da-da-da-da-da, all the things that you need to look at when you're doing that. And instead, they say, oh, but wait a minute, EOLHC may do some regulations. So the may hangs out there, and then today, they're like, oh, we're definitely doing it. So we're also going to have to conform to the regulations, which we don't have yet.
Well, the conforming, I mean, most towns, everybody has something to do about in-law apartment. But basically, the concerns with all towns are, is it getting separated and turned into a separate apartment, and then you get, you know, cars, or you get people, the fire department shows up, they have no idea that all these people live over here.
So that's...
So it just seems like we can handle it.
Sometimes do.
Yeah.
We do. We have an in-law bylaw.
Yeah.
And that requires that somebody who owns the property lives in the house, and that you're related to the person you're renting to. That's what ours, simple requirement is now. This eliminates that. You can have it by right, you don't have to have a special permit, and you can rent it, and it doesn't have, you don't have to be related to the renter, and as a matter of fact, you can move to. And nobody has to live on that property that owns the property. You can have two tenants in it. And what we found out today is, you could add another ADU, but that would have to be by special permit. So you could have the initial house, your first accessory dwelling unit, and then add a third or a fourth, but those would have to be by special permit.
That's my concern. It's basically turning a lot of houses into investment properties.
Yeah, which, that's...
I don't know how this helps with price.
Did this start at the statehouse level?
Yeah.
How did we start it?
The, the big mistake was to, in my opinion, was making it, you didn't have to have owner occupied.
I keep saying it, Kevin. I said, this is a big, big, big mistake.
Gosh, every piece of property has a night bear, because it's a non-owner, it's somewhere else.
Yeah.
But, you know, beyond those, which are fairly large concerns, right? But our hands are going to be tied on that stuff. We have no idea what setbacks are, we can't do any of that. And they only, you only have to have one parking space under the law, and if you live within a half a mile of an MBTA station, it's any commuter, it's any MBTA station, but for us, it would be the commuter rail, you don't even have to have a parking spot for this ADU. And my concern is, we have that law in town that you can't park on the side of the road from November 16th to April 16th for snow plowing, and... side of the road from November 16th to April 16th for snow plowing and icing and all of that stuff. So, again, how do we, these are things I don't know how to fix, and they're not giving us any guidance or regulations, and they're working on them, and they had no timeline. So, I mean, as we do zoning here, you guys have that stuff by January, so you can have a thoughtful process and get feedback. So, by the time we get to April, you've crafted a good bylaw, you've had feedback, and it's defensible at town meeting, and I don't know where we're gonna be, because they're gonna craft their regulations, and then they're gonna send them out, and they're gonna have a review period and a comment period, and then we'll get final reg, I don't know what it's gonna be.
Liz?
Effective February 2nd. That law goes into effect.
I have another question as far as the state. Have you heard anything more about the MBTA housing? I know when I was away, I read something like Milton and stuff like that, that's still up in the air. Can you give us some?
Well, I can tell you, we are compliant. We got our letter. I think you were not at that meeting, but we're, we're all set. And there are, I believe, 40 communities?
Yep.
Forty communities that are compliant, that have received their letter, everything's been reviewed.
Well, the arguments have been made to the Supreme Court.
Yep.
And we're just...
Waiting for a decision.
To see what they're gonna say.
We're all set with that.
We're all set, which is why we're eligible for this catalyst grant, which is why we did hop on it, because we're one of 40 communities and had $15 million, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, just moving on to the last item, public hearing.
So, I did not receive a letter asking to continue. I did receive an email from Carlos Ferreira, who is part of that engineering consulting team on October 21st, that said the conservation meeting was postponed for November 12th. The planning board is scheduled for November 4th. We most likely have to request a continuance until December 2nd. Please let me know if this is okay, and I will request a new continuance to December 2nd. And I wrote back, I would ask for a continuance to January at the earliest. This will provide sufficient time for a conservation meeting and then revisions to get to the planning office by December 6th, because my filing deadline for December is Friday, and he is not going to conservation until next week. So, he's not gonna have plans to me on Friday because he hasn't been to conservation yet.
So, we're looking like at January, so?
But that's, he requested December. I also have an email from Lynn Mullen that you received as well, that she wanted to provide status from the Conservation Commission. 4454 Linwood Street has not come before us with a completed application. We opened the hearing in early September, and then they informed us they wanted a continuance for a meeting in September. Apparently, that was for us, but it went to conservation, but they gave them the benefit of the doubt. They've been on the agenda for all meetings since, but have not requested continuances for other meetings and did not appear before us until I let them know we would possibly take a vote to deny. The applicant appeared before us on October 22nd, but was not prepared, and the abutters complained about the lack of notice. They have re-notified abutters, and hopefully, they will appear at our next meeting scheduled for November 12th. So, I have to say that my concern too is the abutters, we don't have any here, and I might give up hope after it's been on your agenda forever and nobody's shown up, and so I don't know what you guys want to do about that.
Yes, you can't make people care.
I've heard nothing from them.
Nothing for us to do.
Well, I mean, the only thing I have is that we will have to request a continuance to December 2nd, but I didn't receive a formal request. So, your option tonight, you have to take some action. It's either deny it or continue it.
Deny.
You have to take some action because it's a, it's a definitive subdivision hearing. So, we can't just let it float to another meeting without action, either...
When you say deny, deny.
Deny the application for the definitive subdivision hearing, so you're denying the...
I'd make that motion.
So, motions were made to deny this plan. Anyone want to second it?
So, help me understand what that means, we deny the application?
So, they submitted an application with the plan, and they worked with Dave on some of it.
We're going back to, we're going back to May?
Yeah.
And before?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
And then they've requested a continuance, requested a continuance?
Yep.
And then in June, do we meet in June or July? July? And they requested a continuance for September. That would be the next meeting, and then they weren't ready in September. And then in September, they needed to go to, still had to go to conservation, which was October. So, they requested a continuance till October. And then in October, they requested a continuance till November. And then tonight, we have no request for December, except when I read you in that email.
I think they had ample, ample opportunities, an ample opportunities.
I don't disagree with you. I mean, it's, I mean, I didn't feel like it was up to our office to reject them and say, hey, what's going on? Are you coming to the meeting tonight? Do your letter? They still have not made it to a conservation meeting.
Okay. If we, if we deny, when are they allowed to resubmit?
They can resubmit the next month.
All right.
There's no, there's no penalty period. It's just, you've denied the application. And I mean, quite frankly, I mean, it would be fair for the abutters to get another notice.
Well, that's why I want to kick the process.
Right?
It's too far down the road.
And then the other thing is, I don't know what you guys want to do, but Dave has actually retired, and he did say he would stay on, and I've kept him in the loop on these emails, but I mean, we're four months out from when he said he would do this, and he still doesn't have a final plan to review. And again, they haven't been back to conservation.
Yep.
I guess that's, I don't, I don't know what else I can tell you, I can tell you that...
Going back to Norwood Engineering's correspondence to May 6th, right?
Yeah.
Recommendation. Plan isn't ready for action by the planning board. If the applicant can address a number of these comments, the board may consider approval subject to the following conditions. First was, obtaining an order of conditions from the Conservation Committee. Doesn't have it. Second, confirmation from other town department regarding the acceptability of the design within this jurisdiction, including water, sewer, and street lighting. Don't, don't have it, right?
No.
Third, remaining revisions must be addressed prior, revisions must be addressed prior to the endorsement of the plan. We'll return to the planning board for clarification, and that's the list of things that Norwood Engineering had put into the May 6th, and that gets us back to Dave's participation. And I think, as we sit here tonight, we don't know if those exceptions have been addressed in their entirety.
No, no, I don't know. And I, and I don't know if you remember the plan, but there was a lot of wetlands.
Yep.
And so I have no idea what they're going for conservation. I mean, it may radically alter the plan you guys saw, it may not.
Yep.
I don't know. It's all up in the air, which is why we've been waiting for them to get through conservation.
Fourth, compliance with the standard conditions for subdivision approved as adopted by the planning board. And fifth, submission of an application for an EPA construction general permit. And we don't, we don't know. So, our direction was, was laid out pretty clearly as of the May 6th, or the May meeting. And for the purposes of our discussion or consideration, nothing's changed.
No.
So, denying the application is, under the circumstances, seems, doesn't seem at all unreasonable.
Well, Jeff made a motion. You want to second it?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, it's because the conditions have not been met that were laid out in the May 6th?
Oh, to the best of our knowledge.
Yeah.
We don't know. Kind of appears it died on their end. We've had clients like that, that just, they don't understand how involved it is, and they're not really that serious about it.
Was this the old Turcat property?
Yeah, 207 Bedford.
Yeah. Well, hold on to something, we'll do something. Just, just so, I'm just bringing this up with Liz. At the ZBA agenda, Goslin wants to, Steve Goslin wants to do something at that 207 Bedford Street property. Remember that, the old Turcat house? Yeah.
Which house?
It's one on the corner of the Guyhorn Village, nine units.
I think he started at 13.
Started with 13.
Then he went to 11.
Then he started yelling at the residents, the neighbors, and the abutters.
Yeah.
He sold it to Steve Goslin.
Oh.
Then we did the Form A, it was up to last month, and it was two months ago.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, so they're still before zoning. I think they're just...
So, he's gonna put like three units on one, two on the other, or something like that, right?
It's two and two.
Two and two.
Two complexes.
So, it doesn't need to be a subdivision because we subdivided the land.
And it doesn't, he's not going over two units.
Yeah.
He'll make a nice place. Typically does.
Well, we went through a lot of hassle with that property, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I think that's it from the set of the law.
Anybody, anybody else, anything they want to talk about tonight?
A couple of things, please. So, we're back next month to talk about Center Avenue and the DPW complex. Is that right?
Yes.
What, about the DPW? Oh, Fire DPW.
Fire Department of DPW.
Oh.
Yeah, they're due back. I think their plan has to be back on the 18th.
Yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be back to this office on the 18th.
Okay. So, have we heard anything from Larry?
I did check with Larry, and he has not, as I suspected, he hadn't heard anything. But I have to do, do have to say, they've been very good about keeping the planning office in the loop, so we can kind of track charges and make sure the money's not going crazy.
Yep.
And he hasn't received anything. We haven't received anything. I know they had a working meeting on Friday down in that office, that committee did. So, I'm hoping that was about what they want to see on the plan before they gave it to us.
Yep, let's hope, let's hope so.
Yeah.
I mean, you know... It's also down to subsoil issues, questions, right? That's what I've seen a lot of questions about, where the water's flowing.
So, that Island Grove is low because of that. They pulled the board so they could get in and clean out that drain that was talked about at the last meeting. Remember there was?
Yep.
And really get a good, clean that out, get a good depth on that.
Yeah, well, there were a number of topics, and I think that, you know, one of the takeaways from that was, they needed to continue the conversations with the board's engineering firm to kind of work through some of the issues that had been raised. It's mildly concerning that here we are, a month away from our next meeting to talk about it, and our engineer is telling us that there's been no communication. Now, that may not be cause for concern.
No.
But certainly, you would hope that before too much longer, that they get back in touch with him and start working through some of the, the things that we talked about in our last meeting.
Or maybe that's exactly what they're doing.
Maybe.
Right?
Yep.
That, I have my fingers crossed that I'm hoping that's, we're headed in that direction. I thought Larry had some good input.
Yeah.
On things that could be done.
It also seemed like a good crew, that they've hired the engineers in the planning system. Okay. So, that's on tap for the next meeting. A while back, you had been kind of plugging away at some of the master plan updates, Kevin, and just kind of keeping that rolling. So, maybe in the next meeting or two, we could kind of come back to that again and see if this, anything else that we might have been able to check off the list or report progress against goals. And I think some of that, Rick, would fall into the category of the commercial properties conversation you're talking about. I mean, even though they may not be anything that we can, as a board, do, still it's within our purview as the extodients of the master plan, to be pushing that agenda and that discussion. And certainly, that would tie back to some of the things that are called out or called for in the, in the master plan. So, maybe we can just kind of see where we're at with that. And then I also recalled that we had been kicking around design guidelines for 3A zoning. We had, one of the stipulations in the, in the zoning was that the board could recommend or promulgate guidelines for what we'd like to see for housing, and we talked a little bit about that. But I don't recall that we, we...
We sent you guys stuff, the stuff from the Cape and someplace else. So, we sent you ideas, and I thought you were talking, talked about doing a lookbook.
Yeah.
We should probably come back to that again.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you guys want to meet like a half an hour early sometime.
Yep.
And have a working group before your meeting.
Yep.
And we can maybe...
That sounds good, something like that.
Get some of what you're looking for, and then we can throw them in for the annual town meeting.
Yeah.
To include them in that zoning bylaw.
Yeah, good, good. Yeah.
Okay.
The type of thing that'll fall between the cracks if we're not careful.
Yeah. So, how about I set that up for your January?
Okay.
Meeting?
Yeah.
Because we have the DPW fire station, I'm not sure.
That sounds good.
What that's gonna look like, so for January. So, January, how about January, we'll do some master, we'll meet a half hour early for working.
Commercial property.
On the design guidelines.
Addressing how, how, how do you see the action of that?
And if in the meantime, you guys could all send us what your ideas are, what you're coming away with from what we sent you, or what you see around town, what you'd like to see included, we can maybe come up with a master document, and then you can pick and choose off of that.
Can you send us a reminder of that, please?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Let Kevin send that stuff out to you again, and then it'll be your Christmas break, your holiday break homework. And then we'll also start, we'll do some master plan updates, because we have done a lot.
Yeah.
Kevin's done a lot of work on that, so we'll, maybe we'll throw one in December and a couple in January.
Okay.
So, we can keep poking at that. And I mean, the Housing Protection Plan getting updated, the Open Space Recreation Plan getting updated, are all gonna be ticks off of that box, too.
Yeah, particularly like if you say that, that any of this is part and parcel of putting together something that would be presented at town meeting, then it's certainly not too early to start trying to put a finer point on that.
Right.
So that we can...
Good.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Good meeting tonight, guys. Do I hear a motion adjourned?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.